Welcome and welcome to Friday's High New Club. Do we have any first time guests? Okay, we have one over here. So you're working the PA system. Anybody else? Okay, good. The, uh, every High New Club we start out with an opening prayer to pledge allegiance to the American flag. Today, we're gonna deviate just a little bit from that. Before we do our pledge allegiance to the American flag, we're gonna play a little short video. And then after that, Paul Sublet is gonna do our opening prayer for us, okay? Okay, let's play the video.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you this day for this country that you've given us, for the freedoms that you allowed us by your grace. We thank you, Lord, for 200 some odd years you've had your hand upon us. You've watched over us. And we've turned our backs on you. I pray you'd forgive us that. I pray you'd stir our hearts toward you. And to understand that freedom only comes from your grace and by your hand. And that, Lord, we need to seek your face to bring our country back to where it was. Lead us and guide us as we attempt to do that in our discussion today, in the work that we do privately. Help us, God, to serve you while we try to build this country. We ask you to take our bodies and use us, make us useful vessels for your service and for your work. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Our guest speaker this afternoon is gonna be Councilman Ed Shadie, who most of you would know by now as also running for the Oklahoma City Mayor's race. And then he'll also stay after and answer any questions somebody may wanna have one on one. Let's talk about this coming Monday. I kinda highlighted a little bit about on that opening with that baby and that mother raising her child up to do the Star-Spangled Banner. I mean, what an honor it is to have people in this country that raise their children up in the way, what I'm gonna say, to honor our country. And in honor of our country, what I'm gonna ask all the veterans to please come forward so we can get a picture. Because what I would like to do is upload that picture to our Facebook page and also to our webpage. Now, we've got two veterans that, there's really no veteran any more important than any other, but there's two veterans that I'm gonna personally honor today, okay? One female, one male, okay? Our female that I'd like to honor is Cindy Martin. Okay, Cindy, I want you to come on first, okay? Most people know the disabilities that Cindy has suffered every, the rest of her life since her legs got blown off in a terrorist bomb. We know that, most of us. And she'll never recuperate from those, obviously, those limbs being broken, taken off. But we can honor you and thank you for what you've done for our country. And I know you may think it a little embarrassing, but sincerely, we honor you and we appreciate you so much for being a member of High New Club. Thank you for your service. Okay, the second one is Ed Vezzey. Ed, yep, we want you up. Now, this man's ship went down here in Pearl Harbor, okay? Most of you may know that too. Same kinda thing, okay? One thing about it, combat, going through these ordeals or whatever, you get to come home. Some people get to come home. Other soldiers or military people never get the opportunity to come home and speak like at High New Club. Ed was so blessed, God blessed him to be able to come home through that battle, those battles. And we're so appreciative of him, being able to do that. But the one thing about vets, when they get to come home, going through that ordeal, they really never do get to go home because they're always thinking back of things that happened. You never, today, we call that PTSD, which is kind of a new fangled kinda deal. And most people never got to understand that either. But anyway, Ed, the same thing. Thank you so much for your service. Thanks for that service, okay? Okay, now, all you other vets, if you would please, not that you're not important, because you're very important, okay? If you would please step forward and come forward, because I wanna get a picture of all our veterans from High New Club. And we so appreciate everyone. So come forward. Snuggle on in. Get on in. We wanna get everybody. Get everybody in here, okay? Get in. Ready, thought ready? I wanna personally thank each and every one of you for your military service. Thank you very much. And all the High New Club members. Councilman Shadie, are you ready? Okay, if you please take the front mic, and we've got somebody that wants to introduce you today.
Hi, I'm Mike. Do you remember when, in the 90s, when Bill Clinton said, "It's the economy, stupid"? That's what we're still doing today. That's what Barack Obama was saying. Four years ago, my friend Brian Walters got involved in the city council race, and he was defeated. Most of y'all know that. The Chamber of Commerce spent over $400,000 defeating Brian previously to a race that amounted to about a $25,000 raise. And so I just kinda showed the type of folks that they wanted in the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, the Chamber of Commerce works on the council. Couple of years ago, I watched with interest a race up in Ed's district, Councilman Shadie's district. And I remember there were at least three, maybe four or five people that ran for that office. One of them was Charlie Swinton. And I believe he was a chamber guy. In fact, he's, uh, never mind. Youth Expo, we'll just say, part of that, Youth Expo. So Ed was, went to the runoff. He was elected, and I was really excited about that because he defeated the chamber, and the chamber spent a lot of money to see that Ed wasn't elected. So I called Ed up, I think I called him the Saturday after the election. Never talked to him before in my life, and I wondered if he might get together, fully expecting that he's not the chamber guy. And so sure enough, Ed said, "Sure, it'd be happy to meet." We met at the Panera Bread across from Baptist Hospital. And at least from my side, we instantly became friends. We probably spent two or three hours together. I realized that Ed was concerned about many of the same battles I'm concerned about. And that's the massive amounts of money that very wealthy people in the state of Oklahoma pour into races so that they control who gets elected. Because they poured massive amounts of money trying to defeat me. I may not agree with Ed on everything, but I know one thing, when it comes to the economic issues facing us in our city, things of that nature, Ed and I are lockstep. He and I have been able to help each other, inform each other about rotten deals downtown, and we'll continue to do that. But, and we do that quite often. So anyway, I'd like you to welcome Ed Shadie today.
That feeling is so familiar. If you think they spent a lot of money two years ago, wait till, wait till you see what's coming now. So I wanted to, if I look like I just came from a funeral, because I just came from a funeral. So I'm a little introspective this morning. I was a dear friend of the family. And so I, you know, I wanna apologize, number one, for being late. Number two, I hope that I can come back. We've got, we're just another four months before the mayor's election on March 4th. And we can talk, you know, about policy issues again. I'd like to just maybe spend just a minute telling you about me and why I'm doing this, why I would run for mayor and face probably what would be an unprecedented amount of money coming out at me and resistance to change. My grandparents came, had a couple sets of grandparents. One came from a Christian village in the southern part of Lebanon about 100 years ago in World War I. And kinda the whole village came to Oklahoma City. I don't know how they ended up in Oklahoma City. And just to preemptively, you know, answer the question, they kinda, people decided, well, we'll either say shaded, or shattered, or shadied, or tomato, tomato. But just kinda spread through the state, and it's all the same family from the same Christian village in Southern Lebanon. Started at a grocery store, built a church, worked very, very hard with meager means, and put my father and his siblings through school. I unfortunately never got to meet those grandparents. I had another set of grandparents, well, one grandmother. And they came from Germany, settled in Purcell. Again, I don't know how they ended up in Purcell, but it was a farming, a German farming community in Purcell. And never knew my grandfather. My grandmother was split up four times, and I was very close to her. And she lived in the South Walker neighborhood on Southwest 50th and Chertel. And we spent a lot of time together and spent a lot of time, you know, we didn't have the internet and all the things we have today. We spent a lot of time on her front porch, which seemed really, really big to me. Now I could go back, it's only like three feet, but it seemed really big. We could sit out there, what I remember is everybody in the neighborhood was also sitting on their front porch. And then they would take turns, and they would walk through our neighborhood, and they would come up on our porch. And we would all, we were watching each other, we were talking to each other. We knew who everybody on that street was. And just as an aside, you know, when I go back, it's very clear that things are different. People are in their backyard, and when I knock on their door and talk to them, they don't know who their neighbors are. And so I feel sadness. I also feel blessed to have experienced that because I know what makes neighborhoods strong, and I know what needs to be encouraged to get us back there. I, you know, I didn't struggle the way she was, she was, had very meager means throughout her life. I didn't struggle the way that they struggled. I worked hard. I mean, I don't think anybody works harder than I do. But I didn't have that same, you know, economic struggle that they had. I went to medical school here at OU. I went off and became a spinal surgeon. Didn't, had a sense of, you know, something missing, something spiritually missing. Had developed an addiction to marijuana for many years. And, but even without that, there was nothing inside. There was no, spiritually, there was nothing. There was bankruptcy. And struggled like that for a number of years. Ended up, things kinda coming to head. Lost my brother, lost my marriage at the same time. And got into long-term recovery many, many years ago. And I've been on this spiritual journey over the years and developed a very special relationship with God. And that's what brings me here to you today. That's what brought me here to politics. That's what, that's what makes me, this is a private road, a private spiritual journey. It's what makes me where I can't be bought, where I can't be. If I wanted financial reward, I would just not run and go back to my medical practice and make a whole lot more money than the $24,000 a year I'm trying to earn. But began that spiritual journey. And that recovery world, for those of you who are aware of it, those of you, anybody familiar in the Oklahoma City community, which is very robust, it's a community that emphasizes honesty above all else, honesty with self and honesty to others, altruism and working for others. If I spend time working for you, time trying to get sidewalks in your neighborhood, time thinking about your alcoholism or your, then that's less time I'm thinking about Ed, which I'm very good at doing. And that's, I do wanna tell this story. I know Andrew, Andrew and I talked about this story. And I know he's told you, Andrew Spino, who's in the background, and we've talked about this story. But it's an important one because it's the lame man at Bethesda, for those of you who know that story from John, Chapter 5. And I consider myself that lame man. The lame man who lays there by the pool of water which has healing powers. He lays there for years, years, years. He's sick, and he says, you know, "Nobody will lift me up and put me in that pool." I think the pool is spiritual healing, spiritual power, a relationship with God. And he just lays there sick, and he never gets up and goes over there. And so Jesus comes to him and says, "Do you, basically, do you have the will to be whole? Do you have the will to be whole?", which is the first step in redemption. "Do you want, do you want it?" And he says, "Yes, I do." And he says, "Then rise, take your beddings and walk." Those that were blind and lame are around the pool, to me, is those suffering from narcissism and egocentrism and just a self-centeredness and not thinking about others, not thinking about community, and that's where I was. To rise, to rise is to take that step, to develop that relationship, to pick up your beddings and walk is to make amends, is to make amends and to try and make a difference with whatever time you have left on earth in your community and make a difference for other people. And that's how you, that's how you make amends for all that self-centeredness and those things. And so the man stands up and walks, and then the people gather around him and say, "Who dared do this miracle in the settler?" And he says, "Well, I can't see him anymore. It's a big crowd. I've lost him." And Jesus sees him later and says, you know, basically, "How dare you?" There are worse things that can happen, right, from passivity, from just staying quiet, from not sharing how you got here, from not being proactive, from not trying to make amends. There are worse sins. So you go back there and tell them. So he goes back and says, "It was Jesus." And then they, they're upset with Jesus, and they go after Jesus, and the rest is history. But to me, the lesson is, it's passivity and being quiet that cannot be acceptable for me. So even for things like addiction, right, which is overrunning the city of Oklahoma City, you have two-thirds of every emergency room visit by a senior citizen. Two-thirds of every emergency room visit by senior citizen is now drug and alcohol related. We have the highest rates of opiate prescription, opiate prescriptions per person being written and opiate prescription abuse, not in America, in the world, in the entire world. Gambling addiction is skyrocketing. So we've got people that are coming forward and saying how they, you know, how they were redeemed, how things worked. In all these other areas, we have advocates for breast cancer and obesity and hypertension. My question is, there's 25 million Americans suffering from addiction. There's 25 million in successful long-term recovery. You know, we need advocates. We need people who are willing to step forward and say, "I'm in long-term recovery." It's not just Lindsay Lohan and Whitney Houston and all these people that end up failing, Charlie Sheen. People in society need to hear that there is redemption and that there is a pathway out of addiction and those kind of illnesses. And so I think that's, I mentioned this, just, you know, this is just to let you know where I'm coming from and why. I won't stop. I won't stop trying to address what I consider are ills in society and how we can make things better, and that's my deal with God. And you're not gonna be able to buy me off, and you're not gonna be able to persuade me in any way, and I just won't stop. Mike talked about, you know, economic issues. And I think that, you know, as long as we're talking about, as long as you're talking about Christ, I think that it is notable that of all the things, you know, he did speak truth to power. He was anti-imperial. He was, he was not afraid to say when he thought things weren't going right. But the thing that got him the most animated, if you will, was in the temple. And those business leaders taking a captured audiences, captured audience, which was the poor women who had to have a dove or a pigeon to sacrifice. And those business leaders had a captured audience, and they, he called it a den of thieves. It wasn't just that he was, you know, there was sacrilege in the temple. It was that he felt they were a den of thieves. They were taking advantage of a captured audience in an economic way. And he threw over the tables and threw the money across the room, and he was very passionate about that. And I think that that's worth taking note of, that economic issues are deserving of our attention and how that money is distributed. So let's talk about Oklahoma City, and let's talk about where we go from here. What's at stake in a mayor's election? Why would it matter? We have a weak mayor form of government, right? I don't have any more voting power as mayor than I do as city councilman. It's one out of nine votes. So five out of nine votes makes policy, and then the city manager, who's like the CEO, executes the policy. The mayor makes hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of appointments. About 700 to 75 different boards and trusts and commissions, right? The airport trust, the fairgrounds, the zoo, the urban renewal authority. Enormous amounts of money being spent by small numbers of people, often times behind closed doors, deciding how to spend your money. And some of those things come to the council for approval, a ready-made package, yes or no, up-down vote. You don't know what's on the cutting room floor. And so it is absolutely imperative that you have diversity of thought, that you have people from different backgrounds, different political persuasions, and above all, a taxpayer watchdog on every one of those boards, trusts and commissions. Because I can tell you that I, besides the time I give to my three children, the little bit of a medical practice I have left, I spend every minute from when I wake up to when I go to sleep on the city of Oklahoma City. I'm giving you everything I have, but I do not know what's going on at the fairgrounds. I, it's, there's only 24 hours in a day. There's so much money going through there. The airport trust is running a $52 million surplus last year. The zoo trust has an $8 million surplus. I think you saw what happened, you know, with Mike and others who raised questions about what happens at the fairgrounds. I, there's clearly intimidation of the people on those boards and trusts. I can't tell you, you know, today. And so it's imperative that there's somebody that we can always pick up the phone that's on those board, trust and commissions, and who is looking out for the taxpayer and who will always bring it to the public's, you know, attention if something doesn't look quite right. If it looks like somebody's profiting, somebody knows where the taxpayer monies is going before everybody else. Which brings me to, say, the urban renewal authority, right? The urban renewal authority is the largest, one of the largest landholders in downtown and midtown, some of the most prized real estate in the city. Run by roughly, you know, half dozen people appointed by the mayor, right? They decide who can and cannot develop that land. And how did they get that land? The government seized it from private people. They wiped out entire neighborhoods and seized all the land. They, you know, different parcels. I grew up, my uncle owned the Criterion Theater. I don't know if anybody remembers the Criterion Theater downtown. It's beautiful. It would be, if we had that today, it would be a crown jewel of our downtown and our city's beautiful history. But they took it through eminent domain. My uncle resisted. He took them to the Supreme Court, and he lost it. They seized it from him, and they tore it down. And they built the Century Plaza, which has sat empty for 40 years. It's one of the ugliest buildings downtown. And because some, you know, the, because you have a small number of people who are deciding what happens with this private land. It's one thing, and I know I'm getting off on a tangent, but it's an important philosophical difference that I think you need to know, and who's your mayor. It's one thing for government to take land, right, and then use it for a public purpose, say, a transit hub or something like that that all of us are gonna use. It's an entirely different matter for government to take land from a private entity and give it to another private entity. That's government choosing winners. That's absolutely unacceptable. I know many of you know the story of Moshe Tal, and that's, I think that, my uncle's story is an example of that. Moshe Tal is another example, where you seize land from one entity and you give it to another private developer who then, you know, you give Moshe Tal with like $55,000 for a couple acres, and then give it to someone else like Randy Hogan, who then sells a portion of it for $1.4 million or something. And, you know, it's very sophisticated architecture that's coming out of that. I think Toby Key's Bar and Grill came up on that land. I mean, it's, I'm being facetious, I'm being sarcastic. Toby Key's Bar and Grill is, you know, just your big box. There's nothing particularly sophisticated about that. I know that others in the room have tried to buy land and have been rebuffed. Who's choosing? Who gets to and who doesn't get to develop this land? It's a handful of people picked by the mayor. And so there's a lot of things that are not just, you know, straight out obvious about what's, what is, what's at stake in a mayor's race. I'll give you another example of the very stark difference that you're gonna see between Mick Cornet, who's now in his 13th year on the horseshoe, and myself. Which is that I may not have the answers for you to everything, although I'll do my best. I may not have all the answers. I will always tell you the truth. I will always tell you the truth. I will never mislead you. I will never withhold information from you. I will get the information out to the public, and then the public decides. So here's the most stark example, and that's the convention center, right? We, in 2009, we had a study that came out, and it said, "What, you know, what are you doing as a city? You're about 250, 300 police officers down. You need to do something immediately. You're threatening the morale of the police officers. You're not able to do proactive neighborhood patrols anywhere in the city because you don't have enough manpower. You're not able to do investigations. You're not able to talk to all the citizens that you need to because you don't have enough police manpower. You've gotta do something." The mayor walks out of the presentation halfway through and tells the cameras, "Well, it says we need to find deficiencies in our police department." That's not what it said. It said, "You need to add police officers, and you need to do it now." So we go through the whole year of 2009, and we don't talk about police manpower because MAPS 3 is coming up, and there's, you know, a certain number of projects that need to get done to get that, all of them packaged as a group passed, right? We have a study at about the exact same time that that police manpower study comes out. We have a study on convention center, a market analysis for the convention center, and how we could, a game plan, if you will. Well, unlike every other city project, which is, the study's commissioned by the city, the Chamber of Commerce does that study, right? It's done by a group called Convention, Sports and Leisure in Texas. And to this day, that study has never been released to the public. I've taken out full-page ads in newspapers asking for them to release it. I've asked for, this is my third year of asking them for to release it. I've tweeted, I've Facebooked, I've done everything I know how to do to ask them to release this study to the public that says what the blueprint is, where they're taking this. When the mayor talked about a convention center during the MAPS 3 campaign, he said, "If we vote for MAPS 3, it means that we'll have a convention center, and we'll triple our convention center business." Even though no city in America has even, has ever doubled their convention center business, much less tripled it. doubled their convention center business, much less tripled it. And he didn't reference the study which said that would require spending two hundred and fifty million dollars in MAPS three, then spending a hundred and fifty million dollars for a convention center expansion and building a six hundred and fifty-room convention center hotel, which no city has been able to do in the previous decade before that study without a massive taxpayer subsidy. The subsidy that the Nashville, Tennessee taxpayers just had to pay to get that deal done was a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars plus property tax abatements for twenty years, so it could approach two hundred million dollars. The reason, convention center hotels hemorrhage money, they lose money hand over fist in city after city because you have so much that's meeting room space that doesn't generate revenue the way a regular hotel room does, so they lose money and Wall Street has had enough and they won't finance these deals anymore and so they want either the taxpayers to own the hotel or they want, they want a piece of your hide, they want some dedicated funding from the city, your parking meter revenue or your car rental revenue, something, it's no longer okay just to pledge the revenue from the hotel to cover the debt, they want something else from the city as well. And none of this was talked about in MAPS three, right? When he's saying we're going to triple the convention center business, he doesn't say word one about a hotel and that this whole, whole deal hinges on not just passing MAPS three, but coming later and passing, you know, this deal later, well, here we are four years later, they've done everything they can not to talk about it, they have no plan whatsoever for how to finance it, the convention center consultants have said, we've gone as far as we can go, you've got to figure out this convention center hotel piece. So there was an emergency and we started this market analysis and it was going to be released at the end of the summer and then we were going to have a second study that talked about financing options and how exactly we would finance, how much it would cost the taxpayers. Well, the study that was supposed to be released at the end of the summer is now going to come out in December maybe and the study that then would follow, that would talk about how much this will cost the taxpayers has now been delayed to late spring, early summer after the election. They are scared to death that you are going to figure this out, they are scared to death that we're going to have a conversation in the next four months about convention center economics, about convention center hotel economics and that this is going to be an issue in the mayor's campaign and they are doing everything they can not to talk about it and not to have a dollar figure for you to think about when you go to the polls on March fourth. And that's wrong, that is, that is, that is absolutely wrong, it was wrong in two thousand nine, it was wrong for the last four years, it's wrong right now. And so whatever side you're on in the convention center or whatever side I'm on, I will give the information to you, I will, never would it be okay to do a study like that and withhold it from the people, ever, just as a, as a basic starting point, know that. The, the problem also that needs to be on Oklahoma City's radar and we, we're fortunate, right, I mean, we, we're doing a lot of these things after other cities have done them, so we get the opportunity to learn from what other, other cities have done well and avoid some of their mistakes. Well, one thing that people are noticing in other cities that have taken these massive, large taxpayer investments and concentrated them in one small geographic area is that the property values wildly escalate in that area, right? And so what happens then is gentrification, only the wealthiest among us can afford to live in that area and the poor and the middle class are displaced out of the area. If, 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 and then if you, if you don't ask those who are going to profit, whose property values are going wildly increased, to help pay for the operations and maintenance of some of these projects, then where's that money going to come from? It's going to come from the rest of the city, it's going to come from the neighborhoods. And the downtown streetcar is a perfect example of that, a hundred and twenty million dollars for a four-mile loop connecting Bricktown to Midtown, runs about, in Portland runs about eight miles an hour, mixes in with the cars, costs about three million dollars a year to operate, we don't have a plan for that three million dollars a year, right? And so what other cities have done is they've, they've asked those property owners who are going to, who are going to make so much money from their buildings and land wildly escalating, you know, would you pay for some of the operations? And in fact, you get a competition developing, one, one group says, well, I want you to come down my street and another group says, well, I'll pay even more if you come down my street and you go back and forth. Oklahoma City, we didn't even ask, didn't even ask for them to pay for any of the operations, even though four of us on the city council at the beginning of the year, February, March, asked the city manager, asked the consultants, we want you to go to the property owners and at least ask them if they're willing to pay for some of the operations since their property values are going to, to escalate so highly. They, they listened to us and then six months later they told us the route and we were surprised, shocked to learn, stunned to learn that there was never any, they never even asked the property owners, are you willing to pay for any of this? Are you willing to pay for any of the operations? No. Five million dollars it'll cost to, to operate a mile-long park that we're building downtown and during the campaign, the mayor said, well, we're going to have a foundation, it'll have civic leaders, business leaders, they'll put money into it, they'll help pay for the, the operations and maintenance, never happened, never happened, there's no foundation, nobody's coming forward, you know why? Because we have the Mary Gardens, which is a world-class urban park and the civic leaders and the business leaders are concentrating on that area, they're having trouble maintaining that, if you walk through that, the bricks are, are coming up and that, there's just things that happen with maintenance and operations, I'm sure you're seeing it in your own neighborhood parks. So to try and build a mile-long park separated by a ten-lane superhighway that is surrounded by vacant abandoned buildings and blight, our police are just wide-eyed, what, what in the world, how are we supposed to secure this thing? It's not just that it's going to cost five million dollars a year to operate the park, it's going to cost incredible taxpayer incentives to get the development around the park, right? That's the, that's the hidden, it's not just a hundred and twenty million dollars to build a park, it's the massive TIF funds that get redirected away from schools, away from libraries towards development around this park. You, you had a group called the Urban Land Institute, they came in two thousand and ten and they're like, what are you doing as a, stay away from Fort Shore, stay away from this area, develop Midtown and Bricktown and your downtown and your, your near neighborhoods first, this is a fifty-year plan, why are you sinking all this money into it right now? You know, let, it's great to do things for your children and grandchildren, but let, let your children and grandchildren pick up a little bit of the town, right? Don't, we pay for the entire thing right now and try and take on developing this when our neighborhoods are hurting, right? And that's the, other than public safety, that is the common denominator as it was in war two and now as I go throughout the entire city, that's what I hear, is neighborhood after neighborhood saying, we're working harder than ever and we feel like we're getting left behind. We feel like, you know, you're concentrating investment in this area, which is all well and good, but what's, how are you going to take care of our neighborhoods? The number of potholes per year is at eighty thousand a year, declining every single year, it goes up and up and up, it's at eighty thousand a year. We have sidewalk deficiencies, we went forty years for whatever reason, we decided not to build sidewalks, so the entire inner core of the city is without, is without sidewalks, you've got, you know, basic things kind of crawl before you run things like, I mean, if you're going to make investments in public transit, these neighborhoods, we don't have public transit in the evenings, we don't have public transit on the weekends, on Sunday to get to church or to get to shopping or to get to jobs, to connect people to jobs, I mean, that is the most powerful economic development there is, is connecting us all. Well, for some reason, you know, this, all of the money went into the downtown streetcar and I asked the transit director, I said, how did you, how did you make this decision? I mean, you have a hundred and twenty million dollars you're going to invest in transit and you don't have transit in the evenings, you don't have it on Sundays, people are stranded, you don't have bus shelter, you've got eleven hundred people a day sitting out in Oklahoma City, sun and rain, how did you decide to spend every, every single penny on a downtown streetcar and nothing on your existing transit system? And he said, Ed, I wasn't in those meetings. And I said, what do you mean you weren't in those meetings, you're the transit director. And he said, Ed, I wasn't in those meetings and looked at me like, please don't ask me any more questions. It's a very, very small number of people that are deciding what goes on these ballots and what projects are selected and that's really the question is, how did we arrive at this, at these projects? Who decided? Where did sixty million dollars for the fairgrounds come out of at the last minute, out of left field to add on to that? And how did we decide, for example, that we would spend all seven hundred and seventy million on capital projects, which is, I, I think that's wonderful, I think taking money and investing in ourselves and building a city is a much wiser economic development tool, for example, than just giving a corporation a check, right? Because if they come for a check, they'll leave for a check, but at least if you invest in yourself, we've got something that all of us can, can enjoy. But how did we decide, you know, what those projects were and who gets veto power? And this is a, this is another important point, is that whenever you have these, these projects, whether it's the general obligation bonds which come around every decade or so and it's, it's how, what infrastructure improvements we're going to do in the city or a MAPS vote, well, it's illegal for the city to spend its own money running the campaign, television commercials, radio ads, the city can't spend its own money, so what's the only entity that can? The Chamber of Commerce. In MAPS three, they spent three million dollars on that campaign. So what happens is that those projects have to be presented to the benefactor for approval and that gives an unelected body veto power over what projects are selected. So when we go to the polls, we're only voting on a ballot that's been pre-selected by an unelected body and we don't know what's on the cutting room floor, we don't know what kind of economic development, oil and gas research center, which in this case got it, got left out, we don't know what, you know, what didn't make it, we just see the projects that did make it. And that's, that, that to me, there's a problem with that kind of, that kind of coming up with the projects. You've got your bonds which are taxing all of our, our property taxes, right? And on our property taxes, we're going to borrow money for seventy-five million dollars for economic development, right? So seventy-five million dollars got tapped on to the two thousand and seven bond and what do we do with that economic development? Does it go to the small businesses which are the, that employ the largest number of people, our mom-and-pop stores, our, that the money just stays in the Oklahoma City economy and recirculates? No, that's not where that money goes, there are conditions on what you can get, on what you have to do to get those incentives, you have to create dozens of jobs averaging, you know, more than fifty thousand dollars or so. And so it's only the largest, it's only the Boeing's, Chesapeake, Continental that are able to qualify for that seventy-five million dollars that we're all borrowing from our property tax to give to these companies for economic development. Chesapeake, we gave, you know, a few million and now they're laying off twelve hundred people and we don't get our money back. Continental Resources, I, I, I don't even think, the irony, the, I don't even think they're in favor of these incentives, I think they'll, they're saying, you know, if you're foolish enough to do it, we'll take your money, but we're, we're going to move from Eden to downtown Oklahoma City whether you give us an incentive or not, right? Harold Hamm is telling his shareholders, I'm going to triple the workforce because there's more oil in the Bakken in North Dakota than anybody realizes and it just, it's just business one-on-one, we're going to hire a whole bunch of people to help us grow and to get that oil out of there. Well, Oklahoma City says, oh, well, we'll, we'll give you seven million dollars for job creation and then pats itself on the back thinking that we had anything to do with that decision of whether to hire those, to do those expansions. It's ludicrous and that's not what we should be borrowing money on our property tax to do because that's what a seven million goes there, that's seven million dollars worth of people and neighborhood associations saying, Ed, we flood every single time we have big rain, forget about the May kind of rains, I mean, just your standard big rain, our, our neighborhoods are flooding and your engineers are coming out and saying, yes, you're right, you don't have enough drainage gutters and so, and what do I have to say? I have to say, we have to wait till the next bond because we don't have enough money. Well, we just, we gave seven million here and three million here and, we could have had enough money, we could have taken care of that neighborhood, but we didn't because our priorities were malaligned. I, I feel like I'm just going on and on and I've thrown a lot out, out there, I, I hope that you'll invite me back, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, let me turn the microphone on, oh yes.
I'm Sally.
Hi Sally.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I want to preface my, I have two questions, I want to preface them with two things, number one, I've never voted for Mick Cornet, I would never vote for a man who looked me in the eye and said the end justifies the means. Number two is, I would say ninety-eight percent of what you said about the economy and what things you know the city, I certainly agree with. My, my two questions are predicated upon this statement and the statement is, if we take care of the morality, God will take care of the economy. So my two questions are this, first, I would very much like for you, we, we had a discussion before you came about this play that is going to be done at the Civic Center, I would like to know if you would come out immediately and say, I oppose that play coming to Oklahoma City because it violates the community standards of the vast majority of our citizens. My second question is, I would very much like to know, for you to explain your, your views on abortion and the pro-life, where you stand on that, please.
Okay, you may be kind of blindsided because you, you may not understand question number one, okay? Paul Summow, what's the name of the play that's going to be downtown Oklahoma City? I can't think of the name.
Most fabulous story ever told.
Are you aware of the play?
Vaguely, I, I don't know the content, I've never seen it, I haven't, I mean, I know that there's a controversy brewing, but that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do, let's do the, first explain, some of us attempted to explain what the Arts Council actually does, okay? They do, that's not up to like the mayor or a councilman after they're put into that particular office, but, well, I don't know how to rephrase it, if you weren't, how are we going to do this? Re-ask your question one more time.
Let me, actually, let me, let me just preface this with, I mean, you, you indicated that you agreed with me on ninety-eight percent of what I said, which is the economic issues, but then you asked me two questions about social issues that really have, are not handled in any way whatsoever by the mayor. The mayor has absolutely nothing to do with abortion, not one thing, the, the, let me, let me just.
No, no, go ahead and answer the question.
They, they so desperately want us to look at the shiny ball and wait and see what happens in the next four months and how they desperately try and get us to look at the shiny ball instead of the man behind the curtain. And they'll talk about this issue or that issue, this social issue or that social issue and they can divide us and then they can continue to do exactly what they're doing on the ninety-eight percent of issues that we agree on and we're not going to make, we're not going to make a difference in that area. Let's change the direction of the ship and then let's argue about what color we want to paint the ship. The, the, these issues that don't have anything to be done by the mayor and city council, leave that, I mean, you, you and the state legislature, I leave that to you, but let's concentrate on, the city council is about, is primarily real estate, economic development, our neighborhoods, public safety, but those are the issues that we should be spending ninety-eight percent of our time talking about if we ever want to change things, whether, you know, this play or that play, but my personal feeling is, if you, you know, if you draw attention to it, you're going to get three more in his place, you cut off the head of the snake, you'll get three more in his place. I, the only reason that anybody knows about it and is even going to go see it, I think is that there's a controversial theory, I mean, that's just, that's my opinion, I'm not going to go see it, I don't care to see it, I don't care to know, I mean, it's, it's not, I'm, that's not my thing, but I, I don't, I'm not sure that I want to draw a bunch of attention to it and make sure that, you know, a hundred people go see it that wouldn't have seen it.
He, he, you're going to have to, no?
This will explain everything you said if you just, if you got to say.
Here's what, here's a part that you weren't here, we had a pretty full discussion about the play and here's, here's the only thing, and I want everybody in this room to understand my position on this play, because I definitely believe in freedom of speech, First Amendment rights, so here you can do whatever you want. My position was, and I'm going to ask you this question, here's kind of your question, if they do anything in public that's indecent, immoral, against the civic laws of the municipality of Oklahoma City and or the state, would you support the police department arresting those people downtown?
What, I mean, how would you define indecent?
Well, I mean, if they're naked down the stage and doing immoral acts, which, which I have never seen the play, okay, which I've never seen, that's against the law, the, so what I'm asking you, if anybody does that in a park or in a theater or whatever, that kind of deal, would you support them being arrested? that kind of deal, would you support them being arrested?
Illegal.
Illegal.
I would do, what I always do is, is I would call the municipal councilor and I would say, Kenny, is this illegal? And if he says it's illegal, then absolutely, we're going to enforce the law. No, no offense or offense.
Okay. Re- bottom question.
Well, what I believe you just said to me is that a person's, an elected official's worldview doesn't matter, we shouldn't consider that when we go to elect people, and I totally disagree with that. And so, that brings me to a comment that it's, that was said, you said on the Red Dirt Report, you said, are we tolerant? Are we tolerant of diversity here? Is that the message we're sending out to the rest of the country? Is that the message we're sending out to our own populace? If we're Sikh, or Hindu, or Buddhist, or God forbid Muslim, or God forbid you don't believe in a religion, I mean, how comfortable do you feel? That right there is not economics, which you say that's all you want to focus on unless it's not divided. But yet, you make a statement like that. I believe a world's view, of an elected official's worldview is parant to whether or not we should give our vote to that individual. And I believe, taking stance, didn't we just say here, folks, that we should contact our elected officials about this play? And now we're saying, you're saying it doesn't matter?
Can I explain that comment? That is economic, it's a hundred percent economic. What, what he didn't explain very good in that report is that the Chamber of Commerce did a survey of companies outside of Oklahoma City. And they said, companies that were thinking about relocating or, or having a branch in Oklahoma City. And they said, what is your, what is your largest concern about opening an office in Oklahoma City? And what rose to the top wasn't education, as much help as our schools need, it wasn't the weather, it wasn't taxation, it was a perception, right or wrong, that their employees of diverse backgrounds would face intolerance here. It's not, you know, perceptions, that's their perception. That's what the Chamber of Commerce is trying to get them to come here and, and do economic development, is asking them, what is holding you back? What are the things that are holding you back? So that, what I was addressing with that reporter was absolutely economic development-related. We're, we're talking about, that we do want, we do want a city where everybody feels safe to express their opinions, everybody feels like they can have freedom of religion and never be persecuted at work because of their religious beliefs, or their ethnicity, or, or anything. You just, you go to work and you do your job, and that's all you're judged on. And that's, but there's a perception in companies, wrong, that, that maybe that's not all we're judging people at work on here. And we have to take a look at our own role then and ask, why do they have that perception of us? Why do they, why do they think, maybe they're completely wrong, but why did they think that? And what could we do to maybe alleviate some of those fears, so that we, so that if it's between us and Houston, for example, that they, that they come to Oklahoma City?
Question. Okay, I'm going to, this man's going to sit down here because he's got a bad leg.
New Dean, thank you very much for being here, just two questions. First of all, do you still have your license to practice medicine?
I do.
Okay, number two, I live in a galaxy far away, it's called Oklahoma City, but I'm in Canadian County.
Right.
I'm sure that there's, you know, how many councilmen, there's eight councilmen, don't know where it's at, and, and including the mayor, but one that does, and he doesn't have a clue. Anyway, we have so many new schools that are growing out in the Mustang area, and people are backed up for half a mile and a mile at a time trying to pick up their kids. The roads are still the original ones from the land run, okay? We, we back, we follow the truck that patches the holes day in and day out, and they're out there all the time. There can't be another hole patching truck in Oklahoma City, because they're all out there on the other side of County Line Road. Can you do something for us?
Yeah.
But what can you do for us? Because our, our councilman, I've talked to him a number of times, and he says, well, the bond money is all gone, and we're not going to give you more until sixteen or some junk like that. What can be done? I mean, you could, you got all this money for all this crazy junk.
Right. So, two things. One, my medical practice is, is, has shrunk quite a bit. It's now, the bulk of it's in Lawton, I treat combat veterans and their families outside of Fort Sill primarily. And so, I still, I still keep that going. And I think that that makes me a different kind of politician, and, and I want to try and keep that going, and, and my work with veterans is very important. Second, you, your, your council person is correct in that, I mean, major road work really can't come till the next bond, and that's what's so disheartening about, you know, the, the last bond. Well, we have a, there's a generally accepted rule across the country, that a, a road can handle ten thousand vehicles per day with two lanes. And then once you get over ten thousand vehicles per day, you need to think about going to four lanes. Well, for some reason, of the forty-eight projects that were in the two thousand and seven bond, where we're widening streets, which can cost four and five million dollars a mile to do that, and we're, only eight of the forty-eight meet that criteria. We're widening streets that have vehicle per day counts of like fifteen hundred cars, two thousand cars a day, that probably should not have had that four or five million dollars spent for ten, twenty, thirty years from now, while you continue to wait, while neighborhoods continue to wait, that have waited for decades to have their streets fixed. And that's, and that is a couple of things. First of all, almost nobody votes in these elections, right? The, that two thousand and seven bond, which is bigger than MAPS three, has got ten thousand people voting for it and eight thousand voting against it, in a city of six hundred thousand people. And the largest block of voters by far is in far northwest Oklahoma City, which is fine, I mean, they're doing their civic responsibility. But, everybody knows that. Everybody knows that south of the river, almost, you know, Capitol Hill, nobody is voting. So guess what area gets left out? And guess what area gets a wildly disproportionate number of road, of roadway things, is in the area where the, the people vote. And so, these other, we, we just, we put people to the front of line that shouldn't have gone to the front of line. They should have waited while those who've been waiting, you know, went to the front. I, I don't have good news for you, in terms of, you know, being able to come up with the millions that might be required to address those streets. But I can tell you that if you miss the next bond, and, and the bonds come along every seven, eight, nine years, and then only about ten percent are sold per year, so if you're at the bottom of the list on those that get selected, it could be ten years after the vote. So if you miss that next one, it could be another ten years till the next bond, and ten years to, I mean, it could be twenty-five years from now before we have the money to invest in your roads if you miss the next one. And that's why it's so important that all the neighborhoods get organized, all of them document what's happening at the schools, and, and how many cars are there, and start talking to Public Works now, so that when certain developers try and come in at the last minute and say, I, I know, nobody, maybe nobody's driving on the street right now, but, or very few, but, they are going to, and it's very important, we go to the front of line, and somehow they get on there while you're left off, that can't happen. Everybody has to really, really understand the process, the neighborhoods have to get organized, they have to be brought to the table in a way that's never happened before, and they have to demand that they're taken care of before special interests.
Question. Now, we're really running out of time here, quick, we've got about seven minutes here, so real quick on the questions, please, quick on the answer to it, please.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Woody, thanks for coming. My question, how closely are the duties and goals of the Urban Renewal Authority tied to those of the International Council for Local Environmental Issues, which is part and parcel of Agenda Twenty-One? Is there a commitment by Oklahoma City to comply with Agenda Twenty-One legally? And do you, or would you support that?
If, if, if somebody came to me and said, I'm, you know, I'm affiliated with the United Nations, and I think this is what you should do, it would, my head would explode, I mean, I just couldn't even get my arms around how revulsive, how repulsive, sorry, that would be. I, I can't, nobody has, nobody's ever said that they're, well, I think there's two things with Agenda Twenty-One, right? The first is the idea that maybe the United Nations has people on the ground in city government pushing an agenda. That, that is, I don't think that's happening. I would absolutely go berserk if I, if I found out about it, I would reject it, I could care less, care less, what anyone from the United Nations thinks we should do in Oklahoma City. I'm trying to think of anything that I would, I would take less heed from than what somebody from the United Nations, I mean, not even the federal government, much less the United Nations. And so, that, that just would have no weight, and I, and nobody from the United Nations would, it wouldn't be tolerated. Now, the, the larger question is, you know, okay, if nobody's actually on the ground from the United Nations, you know, are there similarities between the Agenda Twenty-One and, say, like, our comprehensive plan that we're building now? We haven't, we haven't had a comprehensive plan in thirty years, and we're now developing one. And our planning director has now, you know, announced that he's leaving in the middle of it, so I don't know what that does all the, all the time. But, we have to decide, you, you, there's no other city, there's very few cities in the world, I think, that you're going to be able, not, certainly not in America, that you can look at and base your policy on in Oklahoma City. We're doing something that nobody else in America is trying to do, trying to provide city services to six hundred and twenty square miles. That's the, just virtually the largest amount of area with no geographic barrier to expansion. You've got Jacksonville, Florida, but it's got a bunch of swampland that you can't develop. There's nothing blocking development here. So you do have to have a plan, or you're going to go broke. You're going, if you just, if developers just develop wherever they want, it's anarchy, and we just say, we're going to chase after them with new roads, new fire stations, new police, new sewage, and there's no plan, no strategy, we will go broke. And, and we're already starting to see it. I mean, one of the reasons that the potholes are going up and up and up, and we can't take care of your streets, is that we're trying to take, we're, while we're not able to take care of existing streets, we're building new streets, we've got to just sit down and say, okay, exactly, how much is this going to cost in the next few decades? How much can we afford? And then where do we want to put the city's infrastructure? And there we can develop all they want in that area. But this is where, this is where we can afford to put the infrastructure, and let development occur around it.
Question. My name is Elroy, I'm a retired cop. If you, if you're elected, have you given any thought about the heads of departments, let's take for instance, the police department? If you find that there, he's insufficient, would you replace him or do something?
Well, the, the way that the Oklahoma City Charter is written, it's forbidden for the mayor or council to get involved in the personnel decisions. So we can't hire or fire anyone other than the city manager, the city auditor, and the city attorney. Those are the three employees of the mayor and council. All of the other department heads, you know, are hired and fired by the city manager. I mean, you can certainly let the city manager know how you feel, and we, you know, we've lost two department heads in the last, like, month. So, I mean, there's, there, many of them have been there many years, I think you will see turnover in, in the ensuing months and years.
Question.
I'm Jenny. I appreciate your testimony at the first of your speech, and I have to go along with what Sally's questions are, that if we're going to change this country from the roots of, we need to know where that man's heart really is. And I think what she was actually wanting to know is where the heart is when it comes to the abortions of our children, mean, unborn, and also, are we going to go by God's law or man's law when it comes to homosexuality? We can love them, but we do not have to take, to do what they, accept what they do. And so, I think that's why we're wanting to find out where the heart is on two big issues that we're concerned about.
So, I would, again, I think it's about attraction, it's about attraction sometimes versus, I'd love for people to find the same spiritual journey that I found, same relationship with God. I'm not going to be able to force them to do that. It's, it's, you know, the, the question that Jesus asked that man was, are you ready? Are you willing to be made whole? Not, I'm going to make you whole whether you're ready or not. The first question is, are you ready? Are you willing? He didn't, you know, he waits for them to say, you know, that they're ready and willing. And I can't, as a government, I cannot force somebody. I, I would try, I try and live my life and show what a relationship with God means to me, show what honesty means, and then hopefully that, that attracts some people, and that they get attracted to that just by, by seeing, you know, the best example that you can lead. But I can't, I can't make somebody what they're not, or what they're not ready for.
Question.
I'm Peggy, and I just wanted to know, so many of our government officials do not even know what Agenda Twenty-One is, they keep changing the name. If you want to look at some of it, Plan OKC would be a good place to start looking for Agenda Twenty-One, which comes from the United Nations.
Yeah, out of a conference in Brazil, a little over a decade ago. So, I mean, I, I think that, that many of us in city government are, even if the public isn't aware, I think we're aware of what Agenda Twenty-One is. I'm certainly aware of the concerns, the fears, the not wanting to just copy Agenda Twenty-One, and then that's our comprehensive plan for Oklahoma City. That's, that would be, that's not acceptable. And so, but what I think is, you know, you can't throw the baby out with the bathwater, you, there's, take every issue there, and let's talk about them individually. I mean, just because something was mentioned still at a United Nations conference doesn't necessarily mean it's good or bad. It's, we need to, we need to look at each issue individually. But we certainly don't copy something that a, a bunch of people came together in Brazil and say, well, that's what we're going to do here in Oklahoma City.
Question.
Thank you, I'm Mike. With regards to the moral issues, you are obviously on what you're calling your, your spiritual journey and things like that. Is there anything, I guess, to put it different, was there anything that you would do to disenfranchise Christians, or would you encourage Christians to, to take part in their community and, and actually move into it as much as they could? Would you think there's any reason to stop them from trying to move their agenda forward, or do anything to prevent that?
Absolutely not. And when the Southern Poverty Law Center tried to put Windsor Hills Baptist Church on the hate crime list, I opposed that. And I went on TV and I said, I think that's wrong. Because they came and they expressed their opinions about homosexuality and the sexual orientation and things, and, and why would you ever, why would you discourage that? Coming to city council on a Tuesday morning at eight-thirty and sitting on those hard seats for three hours and then saying your, your piece, that should never be discouraged, that's your First Amendment rights. We did have, we had an individual who, there was some question, he wanted to read his Bible at lunch, and, and there was some pushback on that, and then as a city, we, we came up with a, an ordinance and a policy about that you cannot discriminate at work based on anyone's religious beliefs, that it's all their First Amendment rights. If somebody wants to read the Bible, if somebody wants to talk about their beliefs, that's absolutely their right. Again, it goes back to just, you know, it's your job performance and that's it, not whether you're reading the Bible at, at lunch. Now, if you're, if you're, if you're yelling at someone, or you're, you know, your, your rights end where somebody else's rights begin, you can't yell at someone, you can't be violent. But if you're just expressing your opinion, then absolutely, that's, that's the First Amendment. And, and I would, I would defend that, as I have with Windsor Hills Baptist Church.
Our time's up.
Okay.
Sorry. And thank you very much for coming. Would you stay for fifteen more minutes and answer questions? Somebody wants to come up and answer questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. The, when the meeting's over, you can come up and ask, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, whatever, you can stay there to do that. Again, thank you very much for coming. I might, I might also suggest, suggest, okay, the mayor's race is going to be very, very important to our state. There's two actual cities that really kind of take the leader state office, one in Tulsa and one in Oklahoma City, because that's where a major amount of citizens actually live. So this is going to be a very important race, the same way the one in Tulsa is going on also at the same time. Once again, thank you very much for coming to the Hinden Club and address the members of Hinden Club. Thank you.[1785.33][1785.33]